It is 6:30 on March 20, 2023. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Rockford Area School District Board of Education to order. We will start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, Board roll call. Madam Clerk, will you please call?
Jamie Hilstrom.
Here.
Beth Frasca.
Here.
Eric Gordy.
Here.
Amy Edwards.
Here.
Jenny Nealon. Is Assistant Jessica Johnson here? We have a form of the board.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone being here, as well as Superintendent Dean at the table with us. Next item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion or can I entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as noted.
Thank you, Ms. Frasca, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public comments. I'll read a statement prior to the public comments. Public comment at each regular school board meeting is an opportunity for residents of the Rockford Area School District to address the board after being recognized by the chair each individual who identify themselves and the group they represent, if any. To ensure that all individuals have a chance to speak, speakers will be limited to one three-minute presentation. The public comment portion of the regular school board meeting is not a time to debate an issue but for the board to hear comments from community members. It is important to remember that the board has a legal responsibility to protect the rights to privacy and due process for all employees and students. This means that both district policy and Minnesota law prohibit public disclosure of matters that involve private data about students or employees, even without naming the student or employee in open session. This prohibition includes the public comment portion of a school board meeting. The board respects and values inputs on matters of concern, but when they involve complaints about particular students or employees, such input must be heard and addressed by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. And with that, I do have two people for public comment. Madam Clerk, if you wish to call first.
I would like to call Polly Tranquil, please. And we do have three minutes.
I know, I had to scale her back. I'm Polly Tranquil, thank you. I'm Polly Tranquil, and I kind of leave over Rachel's side. I kind of feel like I'm the elephant in the room from the conversation. But I'm here to tell you that I'm a parent in the district. I have the last of four Rockford students to graduate in June. That feels kind of good. Onto more time with my husband. I've taught the elementary level, the middle school level here in Rockford, and currently am the high school ASIS reading intervention teacher. To the Board of Education Administration, thank you for your service. To Rockford Area Schools, I stand in front of you tonight to advocate for students. I ask you to please fully fund that was listed in the most recently submitted ASIS application and consider increasing academic intervention service for our most vulnerable at-risk students. A decrease in services puts our at-risk students at an even higher risk if they're not able to continue to have a support system in place that provides direct explicit instruction to fill the gaps that were made large when COVID hit and when we didn't provide any intervention services like ASIS or TIDAL for all part of their middle school experience. I agree we're doing the right thing by increasing behavior because behaviors are at an all-time high all over the country. But I am concerned we're proposing a decrease by .75 at both high school and middle school and ASIS reading intervention support. Compared to the elementary school, I do have a smaller caseload, but it's about the minutes that I spend with those students every week. There isn't a set intervention hour for each grade level like the elementary. I work hard with my colleagues to pull students from a 90-minute block and not during a core subject. If it is during a core subject, it's usually at the end of the block. Students on my caseload, they're not self-starters because they struggle with confidence and also know that they will be more successful if they come to a space that has less people, less distraction, and can get direct entry into our support. I am never not with students unless I am on prep, eating lunch, in a meeting with parents, or completing follow-up tasks as a result of our IT meetings. From an MTMS perspective, we've heard over and over again this year that if we're going to engage students and increase their academic success, we must first develop solid trusted relationships and make connections. Fostering a positive school culture and a sense of belonging is one of the school improvement goals for the high school, and I believe that is accomplished by building relationships and making connections with our students, especially those who are at high risk. That is a huge part of my job as an interventionist, working one-on-one, one-on-two, and having an open door where kids come all the time. I also want to respectfully say I understand. There are times when you have to make some hard decisions, which may include shifting staff around to other areas of the nation in order to provide positions for continuing contract teachers, avoiding the hardship of a layoff. With that said, whomever does ASIS intervention at the high school and quite honestly, the middle school next year should be equipped with direct training, excuse me, be equipped with training and direct explicit instructional teaching strategies and given the time and use of her day to actually make a positive academic impact, which I believe will require much more than 1.7 hours a day of support for our most at-risk students. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have seven seconds to spare. All right. My mic obviously isn't working, and I'm just going to use my teacher voice. All right, here's our next one is Jill Gordy. And again, three minutes.
Good evening, members of the school board and Superintendent Dean. I am a parent, community member, and currently work as the coordinator for our three international backglow programs we have at Rockford High School. One of the responsibilities that I have is oversee the IB grants. The IB grants programs collaboratively work with our teachers, teaching and learning, administration, and counselors. It is one piece of the puzzle with regards to developing our curriculum, our work with our SEL needs, and our MTSS. Three times per year, our grant facilitators come to meet with us on oversight of our grants. One area of our performance measures that we are held accountable for is our math and reading MCA scores for our major ethnic groups. It is our responsibility each year to increase the achievement of our major ethnic groups and their math and reading scores. One piece of that plan is our reading intervention position. I come to you tonight due to a concern I have regarding proposed reduction in our reading intervention at the high school from a 1.0 FTE to a .25 FTE. When reviewing the MCA, fast testing math and reading data, it is clear that we need additional support at the high school level, not a reduction. In addition, we are currently below the state average for our MCA scores and do not have a math interventionist at the high school. The ASIS application that was recently completed indicated the ability to fund up to a 1.0 FTE in reading and a 1.0 FTE for math intervention support over the next two years and is a tool for districts to utilize to lower inappropriate referrals for special education. However, the allocation is currently only set for a .5 FTE at the middle school and a .5 FTE at the reading at the high school in reading and math. It would be appropriate to amend the application to add in a 1.0 FTE in reading and math at the high schools. We are finally able to close some of the gaps created by the pandemic, increase our test scores, and release the burden on special ed. The positive piece of ASIS funding for our school district is that it does allow for 55% reimbursement of all expenditures. One area I would ask you to consider is funding reading and math first due to the unknown nature of the budget from our state and consider our behavior interventions later after you receive your allocation from the state. Again, I'm asking the board to consider funding reading and math intervention positions up to the 1.0 FTE at the high school level. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. That is it. Chair, please.
All right, that then closes the public comment opportunity. Item four on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. That one's still on, that's why.
Oh, okay.
The Consent Agenda is provided to us in our packet. I would like to entertain a motion for approval of Consent Agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent Agenda carries. Next item on the list, High Student Achievement Celebration at Rockford Middle School. I would like to call Principal Borzekka to the podium.
All right, so as a principal, this is a proud moment to introduce, ladies and gentlemen of the board, to a rock star, Monti Glennie, who represents Rockford Area Schools well in all she does. However, recently did so at the Regional Spelling Bee, and I know what we had intended to bring her on February and with snow, we're here now. So again, she is a two-time champion, won last year and this year at the building level, and competed at the regional in February, and I'll let her kind of tell the rest of the story. But in order to secure the win this year, she had to go 18 rounds through the last six being with a dear friend of hers. So I'll have her to tell about her experiences.
Hi. How are you? Thanks for being here. And I just think playing at the Spelling Bee, I think, is a good opportunity for, like, kids because it gives them the opportunity to, like, learn more in a fun way, I guess. It could be, if you want to. And I really enjoyed it last year and this year, and even at elementary school, I was in the Spelling Bee. I didn't win, but I was still in it, and it was fun. My experience, it was a fun experience. My mom, my grandmother, they helped me practice day and night, and they gave me the push I needed to win two years in a row. And I think that's that. Is that you, Mom? And if you, like, set your mind to something, I think you can do it. I was able to set my mind to winning, and I was able to win two years in a row. And if you can picture yourself doing something, then you can do it. Because if you can't, if you have a negative mindset, if you're like, oh, I can't do it, I can't think of doing it, then you won't be able to do it. But if you think positive and feel good about yourself and are confident, you can do it, no matter what anything says or what happens.
Yeah, I got a question, too.
I have a question, and maybe it's the same question.
Probably is.
Is, and you, first of all, you're inspiration. Thank you for your positive attitude and what you bring to the district. Do you recall the last word that you spelled? What was the final word? Can you tell us and spell it for us?
At regionals, I got seventh place, and my word was affluent. I forgot the definition, but it's A-F-L-U-E-N-T. Thank you.
So thank you for the support for all the programs you give our students and allowing students like Monti to really thrive and shine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, and our next agenda item is Rockford High School Celebration, and Mr. Joe Huber.
Good evening, board members. So I am, much like I do from time to time in the classroom, I am substituting here for Mr. Menard. So on behalf of Mr. Menard, as a prepared statement that I'd like to read about our Leadership and Culture Committee, that some of our students have some stuff that they've completed. So my written statement begins now. Students from our Leadership and Culture Committee have participated in a number of activities to help boost positive school culture, identity, and a feeling of belonging among our learning community at Rockford High School. One of the most significant contributions is the development of a series of videos where students explain IB learner profile traits, which are the desired traits of a Rockford High School graduate in their own words. So for tonight's celebration, we would like to present to you the student video on caring. We had invited some student participants from our Leadership and Culture Committee to join, and we have one lined up, and unfortunately, there was a last-minute emergency, so she's not able to be here tonight to share some of her understanding, but she also has a written prepared statement, which I'm happy to self-present as well. So let me tee up what the students also said. So our student statement, then. She wrote out, "Being in the Leadership and Culture Committee is something that she's not only proud of, but that she's passionate about as well. Being a high school student is never easy as they're still figuring out who we are and navigating ourselves. I and two other girls created this caring video and presented examples of what caring looks like in our community and what is shown is truly shown, and I believe it's rare to see that in a lot of high schools. As I continue within this committee, I truly hope to achieve more of this to make the school year a better place with Principal Menard, Ms. Kellyanne Lockroom, and all the teachers within the community." Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caitlin.
I'm Pray.
I'm Chloe, and we're making a video about caring.
What does caring look like at RHS?
To me, caring looks like respecting the buildings and not vandalizing stuff, and then doing stuff like sock drives, book drives, or use sports equipment drives.
Hi, I'm Ms. Dee, and I'm the media specialist at Rockford School District, and caring people come to mind. The guy with the truck was very helpful, offers a free donut every blue moon. Howie, that comes in to vacuum the library for us. He's a rock star. Also, the people at River Works thrift store that don't even care about others. That's caring examples in our community.
I dropped my books.
Here, let me help you.
Hi, I have some makeup.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Bye.
So I'll conclude with my own not-prepared statement where I say that these IB learner profile traits are the best way, I think, we have of communicating with the broader community about what IB is. We try to infuse IB within all of our curriculum wherever we can, and these 10 learner profile traits talk through all the characteristics we look for in future, whether it's college students or employees heading out into the world or just general well-rounded people. I think that does the best way of explaining it. So the more videos that we pump out, and stay tuned to our Rockford Instagram to see all the future videos that we continue to make, I think that'll do a good job of trying to help educate the community about what IB is and why it's so important to us.
Excellent. Thank you. You might as well stay.
I will.
Because you have item 5C, which is your DECA overnight application.
Yes, so staying in the light of celebrations, I prepared this celebration about some of our students that are headed or hopefully headed towards our international competitions in Orlando, Florida. So before we dive too deep, I want to, I always like to give a little quick background on DECA overall, and then I want to highlight some of our achievements before getting to asking you guys pretty please, we'll show you on topic, we can go. So DECA, for those of you who are new to the room, is a business-oriented club we have at the high school. It helps to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in those four key areas: marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Something that I saw from a lot of students as they were competing in their events this year is they were really hyping up how some of the classes that we have here at the high school helped them, whether they were taking personal finance with Mr. Talber, and then they were in a personal financial literacy event, or if they were taking economics, which econ bleeds into all the subjects, or if, to toot my own horn, they took any marketing classes with me, intro to business, accounting, some of those terms all kind of bled into some of their preparation. Some of our successes this year, I'd say one of our biggest successes is really boosting up our membership, which I think really goes to show how into DECA students are getting. We had 71 students sign up out of a school of, what is it, like 500 in total? That's a huge percentage of students that are just interested in the club overall, which, when you think about it, is mind-blowing because this isn't basketball, this isn't volleyball, they're not playing fun stuff. They're signing up to do business roleplays or a 10-page paper, or a 20-page paper, or a 40-page paper. These are kids that are really reaching above and beyond. So I think it's, to the kids' credit, I give a lot of the credit to my DECA council members for their leadership, including right in the middle there, Claire. They've done a lot of work to help boost us up. If you look at the seniors this year, their freshman year, they kind of had a normal DECA experience. Their sophomore year was the COVID year that tanked it. It was terrible, everything was online. It was just the nature of the business. Then their junior year last year, there was a transition between advisors, so they didn't know who's coming in and what it's going to look like, and we're coming out of the COVID year, we're stunk, and then now we're boosted up a lot this year. So we have a 31% increase in our membership. Last year, we had, I forgot the math, I didn't put it on there, but 49, I think, students overall. And I credit a lot of that to, again, my council members. They came up with this great idea at the end of last year to do a middle school eighth grade outreach event. So I partnered with our counselor here at the middle school to have a lot of DECA members come and reach out in their, they call boosts, that's their one, yeah, that to come up during their boosts and do a quick little half-hour competition in the style of DECA. So all the students in each boost competed with each other in teams to come up with food truck ideas, and they had to come up with the menu, they had to come up with the design, all the aspects, who their target market is, all those sorts of things. And it really got the eighth grader psyched about it, and we saw a big boost in our ninth grade enrollment, which is great because that means they'll just continue on over the next four years, building on those successes. So that's a big, big success for us. And then we also, in the fall, attended the Back to Business Competition. It was previously known as the Fall Leadership Conference, which is a great introduction to anybody trying to get some steam, get some practice in some of these competition events. Previously, we didn't go, or we only had our council members go, but this time, we opened it up to the chapter. We had 30 students go, including a lot of new students, and that gave them a lot of tips and tools and experiences to help them succeed in future conferences. Also here on the, right over, oh, I can't see with the screen, that's a picture of us in the bottom left at DECA DQ days, which you may have seen posted around. We actually volunteered on one of those days, it was one of our fundraisers, and so there we are giving one of RHS, giving one of our best RHS math teachers her upside-down blizzard. The last success I really want to hype up is our competition success. So we had 63 competitors in districts, which is a 35% increase over last year. We had 41 people qualified for state, which, we had 36 last year, so that's not a huge increase. However, we have 15 people qualified in multiple events, so a roleplay and a project, or a roleplay and a prepared, something along those lines. And then we had 15 finalists, they made it to state finals, which is the top 12 overall, meaning they probably need about 68 people to get into the top 12, as well 80 per event. So that's, I mean, just making it to state is impressive, not to mention making it finalists. And then we had six who actually placed in the top four of each one of their events or in some way qualified for our international competition. Also, I didn't mention it earlier, the Minions was one of my students who's really, who's planning to go to national. She actually put together a lot of this presentation for me. She loves the Minions, and she's really excited to ride the Minions' ride at Orlando. So see if you can find all the Minions in here. So here's our teams that we highlighted. We had two teams for school-based enterprises, so these Maggie and Claire, they wrote a 20-page paper about our school store operations in detail. And then really, this one blew me out of the water, these two on the right, Anna and Chloe, they are new to DECA as ninth graders, and they had to write a 40-page paper about food operations within the school, which they, it was a grind, and it was amazing, but they pulled it out and did a great job. And then Elise and Gwen both placed in their individual events, so they get to qualify just through their roleplay success, which is a really, really big deal for us. We haven't had that as long as I've been here. So our highlights, the reason why I'm asking for us to go is this is our international competition. Those are the four events you can see listed on the side that our students would participate in. In addition to this, there's some additional opportunities. Four and a half, our SBE Academy. SBE stands for School-Based Enterprise. That's where we get to powwow with other schools, other school stores, other students from those school stores, as well as advisors who read some information on it. There's an advisor professional learning for Yours Truly, and then our state advisor, Claire, since she's a state officer for Minnesota, she gets to participate in the election for next year's DECA leaders overall. That's me and Claire in the top left at our state competition. She, as a state officer, had to be one of the big presenters, and our homage to Rockford was, we had to come out and do a little jig when we got up there, and so we decided to do rock, paper, scissors, with both of us hitting rock every time in honor of Rockford, before she finally put paper in. In addition to the opportunities, it's also just jam-packed with fun, so our award ceremonies will be at the Orange County Convention Center in Florida. Included with our registration with DECA is a four-day park pass for the different Universal Studios parks, so any moment that we're not competing or doing something for DECA, we'll probably be in the parks looking like those minions on the ride there. And then, of course, there's various dining and other attractions around that we might fill up some spare time with while we're there. The big question, the funding overall, so we have, some of this is finalized, so hotel and registration costs $6,900 in total. Flights are looking at about $2,500 right now. I've got to book those still, and I'll wait until I get the approval to actually book them. That's about the price for that. We'd have a rental car, a big seven-passenger van to get us around while we're there. Two students would need DECA blazers because we have the most international qualifiers we've ever had, and you have to wear blazers when you're there, DECA blazers. So our estimates in terms of where the funding comes from, some of these are maybe a little hopeful, but I think they're grounded in reality at least. We're going to set up, we have a fundraising effort to get something through Snap Raise, if you're familiar with that, to try to solicit any sort of donations from anyone willing. We'll pitch to the Rocket Boosters, we'll pitch to the Rocket Lions. And then we have one other fundraising idea to go around to all the different local businesses and then try to get them to sponsor our trip with, we'll have, I will get into all the nitty-gritty details, but looking for business sponsorships, and I'll have the kids actually reach out to these businesses, write letters and such to try to make that connection between the high school business and real business. And then any difference here, the students are going to make up. So overall, if we come up a couple grand short, I mean, that'll be split between all the students, and then those will be on the hook to pay that much. In addition, the other thing not listed here is meals, so they'll have to bring any spending money for that, so they're on the hook to cover any difference. Essentially, the only cost to the school then is the cost of the sub to cover my classes for four days, since it would be, we would be leaving on Friday to travel, we'd be gone Saturday, Sunday, and then Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So Friday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday would be the sub days. And that's it. Any questions?
I was wondering about fundraising idea when you talked about it was if you would have an opportunity to present to the Chamber of Commerce. I would think that they would really love to have a couple students come. I know that we have, our board member that's on the chamber isn't here this evening, but I used to be on that, and I think that would be something that the local business folks would, would, so, just an idea.
No, great, I appreciate that. We certainly need every fundraising opportunity we can. $10,000 is not a cheap trip.
Absolutely. All right, so this is an item that needs action by the board, so this is for consideration for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the DECA overnight as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Frasca. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Absolutely. Great job. Uh, next item on the agenda, Five D Activities Director Report. Mr. Dan Pratt.
All right, as always, following a nice presentation. We'll just go back to old school. Um, I'm gonna quickly recap the winter season and give you, kind of, up you on the spring and then touch on a couple other things, so, um, I'll just kind of go down the bullet list. Dance team, two new coaches, young coaches, Lindsay Seabright and Emma Swanson, took a group of girls and did a really nice job. I got a couple calls, some ADs from the Wright County Conference just saying, what a nice job, and it's nice to see Rockford coming back and dance. Um, very well done. A small team, but, uh, those two girls, two young ladies that are coaching them, they're doing everything. They came to get the girls out, and the girls had a great time and absolutely zero drama, which is always great. Uh, gymnastics, uh, again, numbers are, are picking up, and the quality of the gymnasts are, are getting better. Again, we struggle finding assistant coaches in gymnastics. It's just a tough, tough place to, uh, a tough event or sport to fill, assistant coaching. And, um, spotting and, and that kind of thing. Right now, we're okay. But next year, as our girls get better, we're gonna need, you know, some quality spotting because the, the skill level's getting up there. Wrestling, I think this is the first year where we're back fully in the Wright County with a full schedule, um, which means they, they scheduled us without, I think last year and the year before, we kind of picked and chose where we could go. Right now, we're, we're back in fully. And so, uh, wrestling program continues to grow. The numbers of the youth program are really good. Um, and I, I tell a lot of the guys that, you know, you should try wrestling. It's not easy. It's, it's, the, the thing about wrestling is if you didn't do what you needed to do to get better, it shows. It's right there on the mat, and it shows. It's, it's really a tough sport. They had a, they had a nice season. Um, I, I, there were a couple kids that finished in the top ten of the section, uh, top five to the top four. Um, it's just gonna take a little bit more time. It's tough when you're in wrestling, when you go into a match, you've already lost because you don't have the weight classes to match up. And so that, that's always a difficult thing. Girls' basketball struggled this year. Um, but I'll tell you, I, I was at the, the, the section game against Henry. They played really, really well. It was a fun game to watch. They actually made it to the second round of the sections, which is a pretty, pretty decent thing to do going into Minneapolis-Henry, and really played well. Um, only then to go and play Providence, which was a tough one. Boys' basketball had a season that was, uh, I think, better than expected. A lot of people around basketball were not sure what this year was gonna bring, and it was a, an absolutely enjoyable season. It was a, a fun season. They were very competitive. Um, as you look back on the season, you'll see a couple, three games where you're like, man, they could've won those games. They'd have been like pushing for the conference championship, which is, you know, again, it, it was a great feat and had something really to attribute to the coaches. They worked their tails off with those kids, and they got the most out of them. Uh, is that the game at, at Minneapolis North? And that was a game. That, I mean, we lost by thirteen, but that was a game. There was a point we were down by five, and we, I think we went one for nine from the free throw line. You can't do that against a team like North. And even the North coach is like, you, you guys are good. We, we played well, and they were right there. So it was, it was a lot of fun. It was a great crowd. Uh, Rockford was represented really well by students and parents. Um, there, there was an unfortunate situation after the game that we, Rockford had nothing to do with. Um, matter of fact, most of us didn't even know about it until the Monday or Tuesday following. And so, um, it was just, it, just an unfortunate situation. Their principal ended up calling us to make sure that everybody was fine and nothing happened, and nothing did happen with our kids. But if, if you need a little bit more information, I'll be happy to talk to you about it, um, after the meeting. Um, so, we'll talk a little bit about spring. Uh, coming up, we got about two-hundred-seventy-five at the time we did this. I think our, our numbers are closer to three-hundred now for spring sports. That's including your boys and girls across, which we do have kids in boys and, in boys and girls across at Delano this, this spring. If we ever get outside, we'll see. Um, I'm looking at my schedule, and I don't even know what we're gonna do as we start to reschedule and do the best we can. But I, I, I think for the first time, Wednesdays are gonna come into play. And we're gonna have to probably start playing some games on Wednesday if we have to cancel as many games I think we're gonna have to cancel. Track team is working out inside. Uh, we're gonna have an indoor meet, I believe, April sixth. I, I don't think we'll be outside. Um, and if we do that, we have about five other schools coming, and we try to keep the numbers down to about two-hundred-and-fifty kids, just to be safe. So that, that will be on, uh, April sixth. Congratulations to Elise Bjorn for being a two thousand twenty-three Athena Award winner. She is gonna represent Rockford in a banquet on, I think it's May, the Friday, and May, May fifth, I think that is. Is that what that is? I think so. Um, that's, that's an exciting deal. I think this is the fifty-first year. And Elise will be there with her family, um, Superintendent Dean and, uh, Principal Menard and myself. So that'll be a, a lot of fun. Baseball, we got new coaches here, Cody Hallahan with baseball. He's got a new staff, and they are really getting after it. This week is the first week where baseball can throw. They have conditioning, arm conditioning week. Everybody, it's supposed to be for pitchers, but everybody's a pitcher. So everybody's there throwing and, um, getting ready for it. Uh, softball started, track started. And then golf, boys and girls golf, two new coaches. Bobby Van Canell is gonna be the, the girls' coach, and John Mangold is the boys' coach. And, um, numbers look pretty good. We're still, we're still kind of out there looking and seeing if, uh, if the numbers continue to go up, because they, they don't start till after break. A lot of them, the girls are gonna start after break, the boys just start right before break. And, uh, our numbers keep going up. We're probably gonna try to add a third coach just for practice, making sure the kids that don't go to the matches have, uh, have someone to work with them at the course. Our track team, uh, forty strong. Traps get to be a little bit more difficult just because of the space for competition and practice. Um, we've been saying for a couple years now, when we started out at Buffalo, we had four houses to shoot from, and we had fifty kids. We were like only school out there. Now, that's not the case. I think we had three days back then also. Now we get like two days with one house. And, um, it's just getting more and more difficult. It's, it's such a popular sport that it, it's just, and it's great. I just, I love it. I love the kids that, a lot of the kids that are trap, you know, they do. Some of them do other, other things, but there's a lot of them that just do trap, and that's their thing, and they're good at it too. So that's fun to see, and hopefully we can figure something out. I don't know, maybe some people get together and come up with a Rockford trap or, uh, shooting club or something where we have a few more houses available to us. Congratulations to Mr. Huber and DECA. They did an outstanding job this year. He went through that whole thing. Oh, bore you again. Uh, Mr. Furtig and the, and the band, um, they, uh, as always, an exceptional, I didn't say it was boring. You know, boy, it was really good. Uh, they always get exceptionals and high ratings, and, uh, he does such a great job with that program. Um, every year in the Rocket Report, I think half of it is, well, all those things that the band members have done, so, which is cool. Um, I, I was asked to give you a little bit of update on the live streaming up on the fields. Until we get internet up on the baseball and softball and football fields, we really can't livestream. Now, we have livestream football with a hotspot, and it kind of works, works okay. Um, right now, I guess there's a, there's a, a pipe that's broken where we can't get the, the feed up there. So this, they're gonna be digging it up and fixing that pipe so we can get the feed up there. Once we do get the feed up there, then we'll have to take a look at, I've looked at a few different systems, and they're not cheap, but one thing about a baseball or a softball feed, um, the system I've been looking at has two cameras, one from outfield and one right behind the plate, and it switches back and forth between them, you know, at the appropriate time. So you can actually view the game, as opposed to like if it was a, like a basketball setup, you, you wouldn't be able to see the game. It would just be a bunch of people running around, kind of like, you know, third upper deck at the, uh, target field. You really don't know what's going on. Uh, the other thing, or the last thing I'd like to just bring up is, um, over the, over the nine or ten years that I've been here, we've had a, a, a weight training program that's been associated with the Rockford Community Center. Doesn't work for our athletes, and so it, it's just not consistent. We don't have consistent people there. I would really like to take a look, put it on your radar, put it on, uh, Superintendent Dean's radar, looking for putting something in place for a strength conditioning coach under the Activities Department that would work Monday through Friday from three to five-thirty with our athletes. I would love to open up the weight room for all high school students without having to have a membership. The thing about lifting, it's intimidating. Nobody's gonna pay twenty bucks a month to go and see if they like lifting. A lot of kids will wander in there, try it out, and go, I like this. This is cool. But the key is that person who runs it. If they're energetic and fun, kids will be, wanna be there. If they're military and hard, they won't. Your, your kids who are into that are gonna be there. It's that fringe group. But the difference it makes in the whole student body when they start feeling stronger about themselves physically, they're stronger mentally, everything as far as athletically improves, academically improves, um, it's, there's just something different happens. At, at the former school I was at, we started a weight program, started with forty kids. Second year, we had a hundred kids. The third year, we had two-hundred kids. And the difference was, what's going on with your kids, especially the girls? What's going on with your girls? They're so much stronger. And the big thing with girls is lifting, you're gonna, you're gonna reduce that ACL injury. And that's a big deal. So anyway, we can get into that. I just wanna put that on your radar because, um, I think that's something that we really need to take a look at and really hit hard if we wanna kind of go to that next level athletic.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What is the current, you said that what we're doing currently isn't working. Can you tell me what is current?
Well, if, 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 the kids, in order to be in there, they have to, they have to have a membership. And, um, then it, it just gets pretty chaotic, and there's really nobody kind of, and this is not a shot at, at a community center. It really is, is more of a, 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 a different model that, that I believe would work better and differently, having, having somebody who's there all the time, the same person. That's their job. That's what they do. So when teams come in, and, you know, football team, here's, here's your list. Uh, hey, I'm a, I'm a swimmer. Here's what you should do as a swimmer. I'm a volleyball player. Here's what you should do as a volleyball player. That kind of thing, where the community center has a person who's paid, but they may or may not be there today or tomorrow, so the consistency just isn't there.
And then would that person also do some kind of, do we have a summer weightlifting course?
Hopefully it would be, like, to me, I see it as like a four-season deal, fall, winter, spring, summer. In summer, let's be honest. Summer is when it makes the biggest deal. And we have a problem that we have to fix in that also because we have coaches that wanna take kids out of the summer lifting program to do their activity. No, they have to lift, and then you do activity after that, and then you'll see things change.
Thank you for explaining that. I, that's been my experience with children that were athletes, that they had to prescribe, like, here's your program for you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pratt?
How, just, as it relates to the strength and conditioning approach, um, you had mentioned, I, in your ideal state, that three-thirty to five, or five-thirty, whatever, would be open to any high school kid that wants to come in. But did I hear you right then, without having a membership, is kind of like your true north, what you would wanna do?
Yeah, it, it would be, well, there's probably more schools in the state that have a high school weight room.
Right.
And not a combined deal. So, no, I think that's a great thing. I think what I would propose, if we get down the road, would be, we're combining, but from this time to this time, it's considered a high school weight room. If, if loud music and kids in there is, is something you don't like, don't come at that time.
Yep.
But you're welcome to, but don't complain. You know what I mean? And I think that's the key. And I, what I've found now, we have, we have staff members that go down there and work out, and they like it. It's kind of fun, you know, because the kids are in there, and it, it just makes it a little bit more energetic. You also have other people that say, I'm not going down there right now until the kids get out of here. So, you, you know, it is what it is, but if we had our own weight room, it would be a non-issue, you know, but be, because...
Wouldn't normally charge if it was a non, if it was a high school.
Correct.
It would be part of the, right, as students.
It'd be, it'd be part of the, yeah.
Yeah.
You wouldn't charge, and so, I mean, I get all that, but, yeah, we can, and we can, we can kind of talk about that. That's something I think we wanna get rolling when we can.
Yeah, no, I just, I wanted that clarity, so I do appreciate you putting that in the update because you do see that in other districts where it is a little bit more part of just your experience as a student, like where you can have access to those things, so, yep. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I think Mr. Pratt, uh, you are also the, are you, you're done with that, ready to move on to the next item? Very good. Uh, softball.
I have one more question. I'm so sorry.
Very good.
One more question on the indoor track meet. And it's only on my brain because I'm also on Facilities Committee. And on Facilities Committee, I thought I had heard that we couldn't host indoor track meets because the size is too small of our current RCC, but yet we do. So can you just help me understand, like, how we host an indoor track meet and what the...
So it's not that, yeah, it's not that we can't or illegal to. If the track is smaller than two-hundred meters.
Okay.
And so Chad has, has gone around and marked where, like, if we run a two-hundred-meter dash, it might be all the way around or than a quarter. You know what I mean? Or a mile, it might be eight times around.
And a little more.
Right, so it's, it's not perfect. That's why we don't bring in a timing system. It's, it's always at the beginning of the year, just, um, people looking for a place to run. They're gonna be able to do everything in there with the exception of disc.
Okay.
They'll do indoor shot, they'll do pole vault, they'll do, uh, long jump, triple jump. So it's, you, we really, we really do have teams kind of on the list wanting to come, and we're just like, well, we can't do that many. So, uh, indoor facility right now. I know Chad asked if, you know, could we rent out a facility and have a track meet? So everybody's wanting to do that right now. And that's the problem, is like Maple Grove or Maple, or, uh, St. Michael. So all rented out, soccer, softball.
Sure.
Track, so it's, they're, it's tough, tough to find a place.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Uh, next item, then softball overnight.
All right, softball team playing down at Albert Lee. Would love to, uh, spend the night, the night before, uh, the Barcy JV played down at Albert Lee for three games. You know, they haven't, uh, they, they had a, a trip planned during COVID to Florida and got shut down because of COVID, and have, have quite a bit of money in their account. They'd love to go down and spend a little bit at Albert Lee. Can't think of a better place to be.
Florida, Albert Lee.
So, um, yeah, it, it, it'll all be covered with their, um, twenty-one account or their, um, fundraiser account, so no, no cost to the district at all. They all, they're, I think they're gonna even rent a coach bus to go down, and they'll have a room for the bus wrecker and just kind of make it a fun little trip.
Excellent. So this is an item for consideration. Um, appreciate a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the softball overnight track.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anna, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrum. Any further discussion or question? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? And motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Pratt. Uh, five F, Director of Teaching and Learning Report. Mr. Daniker.
Thank you, Chair Gourde and members of the board. All right, uh, three topics for, oops. Oh, there we go, okay. Uh, three topics for tonight. Uh, we'll preview, first day of spring means preview of summer programming right around the corner. Uh, we will, um, then, uh, take a look at our revised review of our winter fast data. Uh, the math slides were omitted from last month's meeting, so I wanna make sure the board had access to those. And then also, uh, we'll briefly review the, um, access plan. That was submitted since the date of March third. Uh, we previewed this, uh, last board meeting and then made some amendments and sent that off. So that's our agenda for this evening. Um, so summer program, um, the purpose, uh, this year, so the reason I'm putting this slide up is highlighting it is that, um, you know, unfortunately, as we move out of COVID, some of those financial resources that we had during COVID, um, have disappeared altogether or are fast dissipating. So, uh, the realization is that for summer programming, we are back to servicing those students who have a targeted need. And so, uh, K-eight, those students will be, who are identified as at risk, will be, uh... And so K-8, those students will be, who are identified as at risk, will be invited individually. They and their family will get communication from us inviting them to participate in summer programming. And then, as always, 912 is credit recovery. We are limited through state education financing to serving only students in 912 through credit recovery purposes for summer program. Just wanna share with the board our summer enrollment over time. Last year, we had our second largest summer enrollment. And you see that right down by a great, uh, school building. So 82 Elementary, 27 Middle, 58 High for us last summer. That was just below the return of COVID number of 237. And so realistically, because we have to limit the scope of our invites this summer, I'm expecting that we do have less than 167. And then that, of course, would mean that we have to staff appropriately as well. And so we'll get to the staffing part momentarily. The calendar for the summer, June, we start off, the Monday following, the last week of school, we start right away with high school credit recovery. Last year, as in the plan for this year, we did two locations. We did the high school and then also Maple Hill. Both were very popular for our high schoolers during June. So that'll be a three-week program, Monday through Thursday. We are moving up the times, the start time this year to 8:30. Last year it was nine, but that made it offset with ESY, the Special Education Extended School Year. So we wanna make sure that those are concurrent. So both programs will start at 8:30 this year. Uh, in July, we start our REAMS summer programming at REAMS on July 10th. That's a four-week program, Monday through Thursday, running through August 3rd. Again, same time as there, so three hours a day. The, we also have our second session of high school credit recovery, which we tried for the first time last year and was relatively successful. So we'll keep that going another three weeks in July, again, July 10th through July 27th. Also, July 10th through July 27th would be our middle school program. We are hoping to have a standalone middle school program at the middle school this year. We tried last year. We're not successful in drumming up the amount of interest and staff needed to support that. So we'll try it again this year. And then scheduled again for July 10th through the 27th, again at 8:30 to 11:30. We also then start REAMS summer programming, the Maple Hill version, on July 24th. That is due to the Vacation Bible School that takes place at Maple Hill from just after July 4th until July 20th, I think is their last day. And so we were invited back out to Maple Hill for both the elementary students and the middle school students. Again, the elementary program is four weeks long, ending on August 17th. And then the middle school program at Maple Hill is three weeks long, ending on August 10th. Jill, Juski and the team at Maple Hill are excited to have us again. And they talked about what a difference it is in their students' lives, the families' lives frankly, for those students who are located in or nearby Maple Hill. Because we do have some, some students who don't live at Maple Hill that join Maple Hill Students for ease of access for summer programming. Do note that the middle school program at Maple Hill does start at noon. That is because of space limitations. They cannot run concurrently with the elementary kids in the morning. And I should mention, actually, just one last thing on Maple Hill. Jill and the team at Maple Hill at Maple Hill do provide mentor and volunteer support. They also have AmeriCorps support again this summer. And so that'll be of access for our teachers working at Maple Hill. And then we did present this last year. We didn't quite get it off the ground. We're gonna try again. It's the High School 101. And this, the vision here is that this would be a week-long introduction to life as a high school student. The programming would include building orientation, character development, academic skill building. And part of that academic skill building would be in the form of executive functioning skill building as well because these would have to be out-recht students based on the definition of targeted services. They would be invited directly and specifically as well, provided that we can provide the teaching support, which was our gap last year. We didn't have the staffing for it. So dates to be determined, and we're gonna try to base that off of the staff availability and determine that shortly. So next up, informing recruit staff. This morning, the information on the calendar and also recruitment Google Form went out to elementary, middle and high school staff members who are licensed and certified and eligible to teach in our summer programming. We do have a decent amount of interest and we'll keep that form going for the rest of this week. Next week, we're gonna be compiling our out-recht student data and getting ready to send that out to the families by the start of April. And then hopefully we have a pretty good sense of what our program is gonna look like by the end of April and be able to, again, just guarantee the viability of our summer programming in due time. One last thing on staffing. So this question gets brought a lot from staff and also the folks who are curious. So staff members provided by, this language is in the teacher master agreement. So the staff is funded at their hourly rate for this current school year. And then they are, they're eligible for up to 3.6 hours a day, three hours of instruction, 3.6 of preparation. So it can be worth a while. And so we hope that we get folks interested. Any questions on summer program?
Yes. Any questions? Uh, could, really quick, could you just give a real brief program and staffing reimbursement for summer school by state, right, or program? Could you just really briefly share how that is funded? Just so everyone knows.
Yes, thank you. So it's funded through what's called Targeted Services, K-8. And then Credit Recovery. K, Targeted Services ends after grade eight and then the high school, Credit Recovery. It's, it's a very similar funding mechanism. We are not a part of the RIT Tech Consortium, but RIT Tech partners with us for summer programming to let us use their authority for targeted services and credit recovery. So we partner with them. They take a portion of the revenue from the state. We take the remainder. And what we're hoping for is to break even.
And basically, right, it's, you need so many students in each section in order to break even on staffing?
Correct.
Just wanted to say, right?
Yes. The magic number is approximately eight to 10. And so RIT Tech encourages us to shoot for 10 to really guarantee that we'll break even.
And question, we have an enrichment opportunity with the, the high school courses, right? That reimbursable as well at the same rate by the state, correct?
It's the same thing.
So the enrichment opportunity that you have for the high school, that learning how to be a high school kid, the High School 101. So that's an enrichment opportunity for our students, right? And reimbursable at the same staffing?
Correct, provided those are grade eight students.
Awesome. So then, do we have, so right now, we're looking at targeted services and remediation and things like that. Eventually in the future, if we had the opportunity for some enrichment opportunities for kids beyond just the recovery, would be an amazing thing to think about. So it's not just a summer school as punishment or whatever, right, of relearning stuff? But an excitement thing as well would be a cool thing eventually?
Yeah. And so that would be something that, you know, talk to your legislators about because that'd have to change from the state cap. Currently, the limitation is that
I did talk about it last week.
Yeah. The Department of Ed precludes us from providing school credit in the summer for new learning. And so that's where, you know, since students and families can pay for it on their own if they go to like a community college or something like that, but we cannot award it as a program.
Sorry, I didn't mean it like at the secondary level, like at the elementary level as well. So, sorry, not, not, not the electives. So, sorry. Bad question. Sorry. Go ahead.
Any other questions on summer program? Okay. Moving on. So winter FAST data, last month we presented on the reading.
Sorry. Yeah, reverse. Only because it came up last year and I, I don't know if it was or wasn't a barrier, but we've talked about transportation. And just, I just wanna look that up and ask you, like, transportation this summer plans, any plans not happening? Like what's, where are we at with transportation?
So for the last two years, we funded transportation through those COVID dollars. And the reality is that transportation is extremely expensive and would significantly preclude, well, it would preclude us from being financially viable if we offered transportation as part of summer programming. So unfortunately, the reality is that transportation as a part of summer program is likely to think of the past unless funding models change.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for asking the question, because I'm sure it would come up.
I'm sure it would. Thank you.
You know, and actually, just on that note, similarly, one of the challenges we have locally is that we don't qualify for the summer food service program either. And that is a significant boon to some districts doing a summer program and that they can provide a meal funded by the state as a part of their program. We don't currently qualify or Minnesota Department of Ed guidelines for that. So we did apply last year. I know that you're still asking questions, right? I'm looking at my, our March coordinator. And we, we really hope that someday we will be able to do that, you know, on the state's dime. But again, it would be, it would be nice, but we don't have that opportunity right now.
So with the legislation that was just signed into law, that is only for regular academic year and does not qualify for summer programming?
It's for the academic year, yeah. And so I actually had that conversation with Superintendent Dean that, I wanted to realize on the legislation that's passed, but it would've been really nice had they fully funded summer food service program across the state because that would help a significant number of students and families indeed. That was not part of the legislation.
Thank you.
All right. Winter FAST data, like I mentioned, we presented the reading data last month and erroneously omitted the math data. And so that is here. I'll present both math and reading, so they're in the same place. This is from REAMS. So we actually saw this back in January as well because they completed their winter assessments in December. Really what we're looking for, just for the general public sitting in the audience, what we're really looking for is a couple of things. One is generally, we wanna see the numbers going from left to right. And then more specifically, we wanna see those red cells on the left decreasing. And so the nice news is that almost uniformly across our buildings and across our assessments, we do see that movement from left to right. And we do see almost uniformly the, the, the red cell decreasing. So that's winter FAST math from REAMS. This is winter FAST reading from REAMS. So again, generally moving from left to right. But again, that red cell going from 14 to 17 is a nice spot as well. Winter middle school math, again, not as much movement from left to right, but there is some. And then again, that red cell stayed the same for reading. That's, that's the trend line we wanna see. So there's the movement left to right and a recent red. And then high school, we had some good numbers here, especially in the reading when I get to that. But math, you know, so in terms of, you know, for instance, you know, high needs math students, you know, that number on the right, 5% of our students in grades nine, 10 demonstrate high risk, which is lower than any of the other buildings we've seen so far, which is great. And then the reading side, pretty good numbers here from the high school. So again, looking at left to right, looking at red cells decreasing. Any questions on our interim, and one thing I should mention, I really, really want to, to, to show the growth data. My data and tech integrationist and I got into an arm wrestling match about that. He won, and he's right. The growth data is more powerful at the end of the year. So we're gonna hold off to share that because it will be more pronounced in the spring and we don't wanna be redundant. So. Any other questions on the data? So generally, good news. And also remembering that our Q count goals at each of our three buildings are tied to that growth data from FAST assessments. So I'm really looking forward to see the outcomes in the spring here. And for the community to know as well, the pathway to find our student testing and assessment calendar is on the district's website at, following that pathway there. All right. Then the last thing, just to revive, briefly discuss our revised ATSS application for fiscal year '24 through '25. So it's a two-year plan. We did talk about this extensively at the work session earlier. But the ATSS, this is, these are state special education dollars from the federal government and diverted specifically by the state for intervening ahead of special education identification. Currently, in our current plan for ATSS, we serve up to four FTEs of reading district-wide. In the plan, we, the amended plan that is, that was submitted prior to March 3rd, we submitted and requested for 6.2 FTEs total, three in the area of reading, 2.2 in the area of behavior and 1.0 in the area of math. So we'd be expanding both the breadth of our ATSS offerings through, going from one subject area to three and then also the depth in terms of going from four to 6.2. Reminder that the district picks up the tab on roughly, roughly about 40% or so of the final bill on ATSS. So these are not free positions, but they're heavily discounted, but they do cost the district. And then we just have some notes at the bottom regarding the rationale in terms of the why and the why. And then last slide here is a little bit on the finances. The funding request from the original plan that we had put forward to the revised plan increased by about $165,000 reflective of the additional two FTEs that we added to them. Excuse me, 1.5 FTEs that we added to that, excuse me. Sellers and benefits make up $558,000 of that request with about $4,000 for individualized instructional materials. The nice thing is that, for instance, the reading materials, reading materials have largely gone digital, which has driven down the price significantly. But that's the, that is the plan that, that we submitted as of March 3rd. The state has let us know that they would, the earliest people will know is May. I do not expect to know in May. I think reasonably relating to June, maybe even July before we know if we are approved for our ATSS plan. We did not request the maximum amount possible simply because that would likely not be viable for our, a district of our size. But we did request a significant increase from previous.
So I liked how you had the data and then we moved into ATSS and it made me think of something. Have you considered utilizing the FAST bridge capability to collect data on the behavior portion? Let's see, I think it's called savers.
It's called my savers. Thank you for asking. So my savers is a screener that we can use to help support and identify, really identification of behavior challenges, especially, well, from outward behavior challenges to secondary functioning, functioning challenges. And thank you for asking that because we did pilot, I believe it was our sixth grade did the first pilot earlier this winter. And then following that, all four grades at the middle school did complete the my savers assessment. And students who are identified as being at risk then are followed up with a teacher assessment to get a second set of data on that student. And then our school counselors would meet individually with those students to check in. And then some of those check-ins would, would create kind of ongoing check-ins. And some students met with counselors and the counselors quickly realized that there was a, some errors in, in the completion of the assessment, let's say, right? And so those students were screened out. But it was, it was a great way to uncover some, some student needs that were legitimately not, adults in the building were not aware of. We have since piloted my savers at grade four at REAMS as well. And we're looking for an opportunity to do that pilot this spring at the high school as well. Because of the nature of our ATSS plan and the way we wrote our plan for this year, assuming we get the award, we would be doing my savers as a point of fact moving forward. So it's very timely for us to try it out as a pilot and then later on be able to embed it in our plan with certainty of, of just the quality of the assessment.
My question is just, once the application is submitted, is there any way to, like, amend any of that? Is there any way, like, if we really felt like we needed to make sure we had that full-time reading in both our middle school and high school, just asking, like, would we be able to do that and ask for that? And then decide if we can staff it or not?
Sure. The answer, sure answer is no. So actually, you and I had a conversation about what if we need to submit just a note regarding an omission, an intentional omission in a plan. The state is happy to accommodate that, but they're not happy to accommodate changes to the plan once it's submitted because that March 3rd, they do, it was a hard deadline.
Any other questions? Very good. Thank you. Next item then is the NPAC, or NAIPAC, sorry.
Yep. And so I will introduce momentarily our, introduce our representative from our NAIPAC. It's fairly interchangeable. But so what we're here to discuss tonight is our annual compliance vote that our local NAIPAC is required to do by state law. And so this is a little bit scripted, but it's scripted intentionally because that's the way the state likes it. So Minnesota Statute, Section 124 D.70 requires Minnesota districts, charters and tribal schools with 10 or more American Indian students to have an American Indian parent advisory committee or APAC. Locally, our group has historically been known as NAIPAC. We are currently talking about possibly going with the state definition. Also, just so the board is aware, we currently have over 30 students identified through the MTE definition as Native American as well, or American Indian. Specifically, the statute cites that school boards and American Indian schools must provide for the maximum involvement of parents and children enrolled in education programs, programs for elementary and secondary grades, special education programs and support services. To be compliant with the statutory requirement, districts, charters and tribal schools are required to submit annual compliance documents to the Office of American Indian Education each year. Also known as the vote of concurrence or non-concurrence, annual compliance is a valuable opportunity for American Indian parent advisory committee members to meet and discuss whether or not they concur with the educational offerings that have been extended by the district to American Indian students. And just for additional information for the board, I think that our, our local committee And just for additional information for the board, I think that our, our local committee is very strongly supportive of the attempts that we've been making to make sure that all students are represented, especially the American Indian students. Where we're challenged, just quite honestly, is in the amount of interest currently. Our committee is still relatively small and we're still building, attempting to build interest in participating on that committee. So at this time, I'd like to welcome our NAIPAC chairperson, Elizabeth Blackhawk, and Elizabeth will be reading the actual proclamation regarding concurrence this evening.
Hi. Thanks for having me. So like Rob said, it's very scripted, so it feels funny to read because it's not me, but here we go. So the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee resolution, whereas the school board or district has an AIPAC composed of parents, guardians, parents or guardians of American Indian children who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language and culture teachers, and paraprofessionals, American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational programming, and American Indian representatives from the community. Whereas the school board or district affords the AIPAC the necessary information and the opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and the educational needs of the American Indian children enrolled in the schools and programs. And whereas the AIPAC is directly involved with and advises the school board and district staff on Indian education program planning and, whereas the AIPAC develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian students. Therefore, be it resolved that the AIPAC concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota statute sections 1, 2, 4d point 78, and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. We, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, issue a vote of concurrence. We attest that the school board and/or the districts, our district are compliant with Minnesota statutes and that the board, the school board and/or districts are meeting the needs of American Indian students. Ta-da. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate it. Mr. Dan Pearl, good day.
Yeah, just to finish up, so the, there's a signature document that Courtney does have, and so it does require a signature from the board chair as well as superintendent, and Elizabeth has previously signed it as well. So thank you so much.
Director Gordy may ask Elizabeth a question?
Absolutely.
See, Elizabeth, I know a few weeks ago, we had the Native American dancers scheduled to perform at Reams, and that's been rescheduled. Is that this week?
No, to my knowledge, I believe it's sometime in the month of April. I don't have a confirmed date.
Oh, okay. All righty. I had something on my calendar for Thursday. So, okay.
The dancer is my, is my dad, and part of the group that he's in, and he retired on
March 1st and left the state, so.
Acceptable reason for that.
He's in the search. Just want to make sure.
Good for him.
Good for him.
Good for you. Excellent. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your time and effort in all of that. Number six, fiscal responsibility, 6A resolution of acknowledgement of contributions and donations. Ms. Dean?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Gordy. Each month I say the same thing, I'll just turn this off. Each month I say the same thing in terms of the generosity of our community, whether it's parents or even staff members, business owners. And so what we have here is just significant contributions by our foundation, a significant contribution, and then we have smaller contributions by individuals. And so again, I just, I love the balance of seeing our donations being, again, someone like the foundation who's able to donate thousands of dollars, and then from individual mom and dad or grandma who are donating, you know, supplies for elementary or, or, you know, backpack items for our middle school. So again, I'm just amazed every month when I see the donation list and see the type of things that are being funded and who's funding it.
Thank you for your words. Agree, I agree wholeheartedly. Any questions for Ms. Dean? As this is a resolution, I'd appreciate a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the acknowledgement of contributions and donations as noted.
Thank you, Ms. Praska, and a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. Any discussion? Being a resolution, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Jamie Hilstrom?
Aye.
Beth Prasko?
Aye.
Eric Gordy?
Aye.
Amy Edwards?
Aye.
Jessica Johnson?
Aye.
If that's as you know.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on to 6B, revised budget. Mr. McNulty would like to call you.
Can you call me Chuck?
Hold me a second.
Yeah, yeah. And virtually we have, Chuck has joined us as well?
Yeah, so Chuck Hurdigan, who's the consultant district, the reason he's been doing that in case unless it changes where he might have some, is he's been very familiar with last year, what was going on, where I wasn't here, so if there were certain questions or things that he may address last year, that's why he's going to join us.
Don't see that view.
Isn't that on?
I just picked it up.
That's fine. I can, I can open it, but if there's certain specific ones, I just don't mind, well then just bring them to and get back to you, so.
Awesome. All right, I guess I'll go.
Not on, man, you're right, like, I'm on.
Poor guy.
Not yet, Doc.
He's like, I'm here.
Soon though.
He's great.
Well, I should ask him these questions.
Well, the first one's the LTFM.
Okay, I've made an expenditure. So you should have the, you have the budget right in front of you. Okay, excellent. There's one on top, it's called the, if you see the little title, the Rockford here, schools ISD 33, original budget. Taking a look at there, just kind of walking through some of the highlights for you in terms of a look at here. The general overall, if you were to go to the back page and look down at the bottom right at 15.07, so I'm kind of going to take a reverse approach right now. Then is where, based off this one snap of where we have the budget, the revenues and expenditures coming in for the year, that we see the final balance for the general funding gets expenditure being around 15%. And to note that the board, the district has it, then it needs to stay at least at eight to 10%, and if it goes below 10%, then there's certain measures we have to put in place. So overall, excellent. Looking at the audit that we did earlier this year too, the audit came back, what was it, like 12.75%, 7%. So really in good shape overall there. There's of course the bigger picture that way. So looking at maybe a little more detail now within that, you can kind of walk through all the different areas, and this is of course where my lack of being here last year, not knowing the exact specifics, but talking, working with Rhonda and Chuck mainly, and then the rest of the staff, kind of where we're at there. So I just want to give you a few things that kind of stand out. If you go on to the top right there, there's operating capital, about three lines down, and we go across and say, ooh, we spent a lot down there. Well, that was a planned item, that can, that was not part of that, but it was a planned item, spent some of that down because you had built up a pretty good fund balance and then going down there. Noting moving forward in the capital that there's some bonding coming up, where about that, just under $400,000, you know, you're going to spend about $200,000 of that each year automatically, so the balance and the upcoming $200,000 or so that'll be left there. You know, most of those capital projects will be covered within, in net, but what we are going to work with, working specifically, probably more in depthly with Jeff Keenness and Jim Luer, is really kind of putting a 1, 3, 5, 10 type of year plan moving forward because we know that there's going to be some tech things and, you know, some capital things that just come up that aren't in those foreseen things that we're planning, we're going to have to do. We still put all the, some monies off to the side, there's $50,000 put every year away that goes towards any kind of buildup for projects, and I believe right now that that is the possible turf project for the future. So that's one of the note, don't be alarmed if you see something big there. Most of the other areas that you see on the top there, you're kind of spending down what you have and what you should because those are the things that you're doing, the academics for the kids, and in most of those cases, you don't have the carryover power that capital and LTFM do. So $544,000 spent down in that area restricted, that was planned, so nothing there. Stopped a little quick to see if anybody wanted to add anything from the committee or questions from anybody else. Right there. Okay, kind of moving on to the, probably what is always usually the bigger one everybody likes to look at is the, kind of the overall general fund area. And if you look down at the bottom in that grayish area, if you can have color, it's a, that's a, that's a reduction right there, or spend down expenditures, about $275,000 kind of going to be reduced, just a general part of operating. A few of the things that I will say to that as myself, who in my past roles as administrator, I'm a big operational person, I'm looking at this close, so I'm really kind of getting a grasp of that. Those are a lot of what I would say we're going to be putting internal controls on more of getting better grasp, and we'll just fine tune some of it. Doesn't mean it's good or bad because you have the monies to spend there, which were appropriately put in the right places, so good job there. It's probably just some of the internal stuff will fine tune, so I could almost break down more specifically than what, you know, if I was standing here next year and say, okay, well, I went down this, and somebody say, well, what did we spend it down on, where we were, you know, balanced or projected? Well, you know, this year I'd say, snow blowing, that went up, you know, just because I did. So that would be something I think that next year I could stand in front of and say more of that. Right now Chuck and I are really kind of going through and just fine tuning the things that we do need to be fine tuned, so nothing to be alarmed of. Just kind of going through again, right above there where you see the, in this case, three main zeros on the top right there, if you look at the monies right there coming in, the alternative compensation QCO, that's in the terminal program. So we're kind of just assuming and looking at, you know, you're going to spend it down next year, you have a fund balance already built up for that, that'll be fine, that's more of, probably we should say down more of the QCO, and then probably grasp with Mr. Danakir's thing because he, working with the staff more there. The two or three below, the two below that are probably the two big ones that are lost as revenues coming forward. And so you see that there's, kind of going to be any monies, and that's your COVID relief funds or your SFR funds, and then the IB program grant. And so those are two of the areas that you have to compensate for. Now, Mr. Danakir's done a very good job of putting some of that into the, a couple of the grants that he works with, A&amp;I and ATSS and so forth. So that, you're not losing all those services, but that's something you have to be aware of and if you kind of pay attention to some of the schools out there that, that knew this cliff was coming, that's a huge loss, and it's kind of a cliff. We're in good shape here, but I think internal controls and fine tuning, we'll see a little truly more next year if that does a little bigger effect, depending on student growth or not growth and stuff, and how the state legislator comes out with funds, so. Just wanted to give you a little part there, we're not, you know, growing up the, the fund balance, kind of looked at and gave the committee, we're kind of sitting at or below C level right now, we've, deficits been a little bit, but you have the funds to do that, you know, you're going to jump up a little in the savings from some of the staff that are covered in by the grants that Mr. Danakir's worked with, you're going to see some funding most likely coming from the state, but that will probably completely offset by the operational side of the district next year. You know, a lot of contracts coming up, you know, for people in the district, that's going to be there. The cost of utilities and operating everything, supplies has gone up way higher than that than most people else, you know, 5%. No utilities and those other things, they're going 10, 20%. So money's coming in, most likely go right out, that's not a bad thing, probably where they're coming for some of that. So you're kind of thinking we just have to tune the, fine tune the internals, we should be sitting pretty good, but I always kind of look at it from, well, really from that standpoint of what the board has to look at is if we go down that, we don't see enough funding coming from the state because traditionally over the last 20 years, that's been the case, we may have to just look at how we're going to do that, how we're going to approach the operational side. And I know there's a good operating levy in place, and that's to me a big thing coming forward because that's a big part of the general fund budget. So just kind of a little heads up for the board to think about, that should be, move to that part, so. Questions or anything that somebody wanted to add or ask on that part?
No questions?
And then just one last thing on the backside, really it's kind of just getting all your overall everywhere else, that I'd probably want to sit down with you a little more if you started getting into the building instruction fund, debt service fund, but those are the monies being spent that you have already designated to be spent that are happening in the building. So there's nothing surprising here, you're going to see a lot of downspend, well, that's because the bonds that were out there are being spent. And so obviously, we need to go from, you know, say $6 million to zero in the next couple of years, and that's what they're doing, so. That's probably a quick snaps on that right there.
Ms. Edwards?
Thank you for this, and thanks for the overview. I really appreciate it. I love budgets. Quick question when I'm looking at this, am I able to see the, the operating levy funds on this spreadsheet, or is that just wrapped into our general?
Yeah, that's just wrapped until your funding right there.
Okay. So that would be super helpful to see that hold out just a little bit because you just nailed it. I mean, we're going to have to be thinking about that as we think about future budget and future planning and what that looks like, so just to be able to, because it's awesome to see like the IB program, what's in, what's out, of course, that's being spent down as it should, and we're going to have to figure out like, well, in order to keep doing the IB program, like what is that long-term investment going to be? And then similarly, yeah, with the COVID relief funds, like we, you know, as we just talked about with, you know, the ATSS funding and trying to balance some of those things out as well, and just, it's a lot, it's a big jigsaw puzzle to put together if you will, so that would be super helpful for me, I know, to see kind of those dollars called out just a little bit because they will go away if we don't do something on it, and so just seeing that cliff and knowing that is really help, would be helpful.
Okay, and then I think we all have the, you know, the budget year approval, you know, presenting and preliminaries with usually board approval in June, that's as scheduled, so look at the time to get that to the committee and the board in May, and then you can kind of probably just get your head going, and then to me, that would be a really good spot that the finance committee really looks at is what's that going to do? Because that is kind of my fun of the job, so.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you for that. I really appreciate that.
Ms. Dean, would you, Anna?
No, I'm, thank you.
Oh, I thought you were leaning in.
No, I was checking on something.
I thought you were leaning in. All right. And I will, I appreciate you really embracing the role of business with the highlight, right?
Yeah. But we did. Last week, we did have a facilities committee meeting, Ms. Dean.
Finance.
Finance committee, yeah, sorry, too many Fs in that, but it was a great opportunity to go and talk through, talk about the reimbursements, you know, the CTE and Kyle Perkins reimbursements. We talked about public health and some of the reimbursements, so those are all mindful objects. We had some conversation about, I know technology's coming up quickly, and the renew and re-envisioning of our one-to-one device initiative, right? That's a big thing, possibly levy worthy, and our operating levy that's expiring in two years was a big point of conversation as well. So we had some nice discussion, so appreciate it very much. So the item that we have is the revised budget, which had just been presented by Mr. McNulty, is an item up for consideration on action if I could get a motion.
I will make a motion to approve your revised budget as stated.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Hilstrom. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Any discussion or conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Very good. Thank you. Appreciate all of that.
I'll just stay up there in case on the next two, if there's any questions too.
Good point.
All right, so then we are looking at the purchasing approval request. And Mr. McNulty, you are prepared by, I don't know if it's you or Rhonda, is that?
Yeah, really, in general, if you look at what's in front of you, there is, that some of the items that specifically get into the maintenance areas and the tech areas that were, the supply chain, especially with that out there, that we just have to get some things ordered now so they might get in by July and August. We're asking that, I'm asking that the board approve, and I know you did this last year too, is that we could get some of those ordered now with that. Otherwise, we have, you know, we're going to pretty much stop while we're, you know, it's May 5th, and these are next year's things, we just have to go and order it now to get going. So it's just really for specific areas and for instances that are needed, or maybe an emergency comes up, so that we can get them in place. So it's just really for specific areas and for instances that are needed or maybe an emergency comes up, so that we can get them in place and stuff.
Excellent, so this is typical procedural action that we take by the board pretty much every year. And thank you for the information. So there's a purchasing approval up for consideration. If I could receive a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Praska, I appreciate any further discussion. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you. And another one, superintendent's contract. Last item for Mr. McNulty.
Yeah, so Guy Courtney, it was one edible, edible. Yeah. And the voice is something out, which is good because I've been recovering from a cold, so. We just had to make a couple of word changes. Doctor Roder got that back to me tonight. That's why I stepped over there to put the copy to get that with just two words that he saw as an edit. So thank you, Jessica, for that that we missed. So he has signed it. Otherwise, I think you guys want to address, there's a few things, the contract salary, the benefits and so forth, that's all in there. Most of it is very template standard contract that you get from MSBA. The biggest change you're probably seeing there will be the PTO change for remove the SIG leave and the vacation and kind of put it all in there, so everything will go towards that. And then he would have the option of using some of the days to go into a 403B or HSA that's not used. And it kind of takes that buildup of the SIG time that normally would have been built up over time. So it removes it to more, we should say more of an annulled contract and early on the future contract. So that was probably adjusted that part.
Excellent, and this was an item that we had discussed previously at the work session. And we do have an amended copy that Courtney will have and will be able to update. And if anyone wishes to see it before leaving, please just ask to see that. So the superintendent's contract then is open for approval if I could receive a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's contract with the addition of high deductible plan in Article seven, section one. I'm assuming that's where it goes, with just including that addition.
Excellent. Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any post? And contract is approved. Thank you very much.
And thank you. And then just a note from Mr. Doctor Roder that it's because of where he's at and their board wanting to afford with him. Asked that if you can get that signed tonight, you'd like to get a copy tonight so he can give to his board for tomorrow.
Yeah, we can get that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to seven, seven A policy revisions, first reading, Ms. Dean and Ms. Johnson if necessary.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Gordy. So what you have in front of you is the last slate. It's the last slate of policies for the school year. We'll have a first read with these few policies. Next month, we'll have a second read, which would be April. And then we're likely not introducing any new policies in May unless MSBA comes out with something specific. With the slate of policies in front of you, if I could bring your attention to a new policy, which is five sixteen point five. It's an overdose medications policy. And it's a new policy that's been issued, distributed by MSBA for districts to consider. And so that is on there. And we, the second policy on the slate is a seven fifty R, R meaning it's a Rockford policy. And it's a payment for food and drinks. It's a policy that would outline the conditions in which we can provide food and or drink in different settings. And this came up earlier during this school year. It was actually a, what do we call it, a finding in our audit. And so we wanted to make sure that we addressed that, especially going into the spring when we often have an end of the year something. So that is a new policy for us to consider. And then the other four policies on the slate are updates coming from MSBA.
Policy seven fifty R, are there any legal references we need to note at the end of that policy?
In the, in the policies that we looked at, we didn't see any.
Like there's no statutes or anything that those are? Because the other ones all have our, you know, they all have legal references at the end of them. I just want to make sure that we have that legal backup to any policies that we're putting in.
That's a good call out. That's why we have a first read and a second read.
Exactly.
I will say that Kellyanne Lockren, who is here in our audience, has been instrumental behind the scenes in helping research our policies, and so we'll take a look at that.
So that was going to be my question, Ms. Dean, about where the language came from. Was it MSBA? Was it Masbo?
No, it was not MSBA. MSBA did not have a model language, which was interesting. But they did not. And really, very few school districts we were able to find a policy on.
But we were cited with our audit?
Staff, and I remember in the, in the audit, they called out staff recognition as a policy. That was the policy that they had mentioned was a staff recognition policy in not necessarily food and drink, but recognition.
Well, we were looking mostly under food and drink.
Yeah, so the, the comment during the audit, when he talked to us directly was recognition.
It might be that and it would be combined in that food and drink might be combined in that. So maybe that's where we'll need to check and see.
Okay, we can go back and look at that absolutely.
Carrie. Is Ryan on deck?
Yeah, we'll figure out who's, yeah, so. But next, so that's our first read. Any other first, other questions for Jessica or Rhonda with policies at all? All good? Just want to make sure you close the, very good, seven B technology report, Mr. Keenets. Welcome.
Hi, dude.
We tried to make it later for you, but we'll get you up now. What are you getting, what are you getting, a countdown over there?
Cannot tell.
Excellent.
Wonderful. First, as you know, I'm Jeff Keenets, Director of Technology. And it's certainly been a while since I've had the opportunity to address the school board. However, I'm going to try and keep a short time. First up, our audits. As you know, a couple of years ago, we went through a full audit with FR Secure. And tentative that had once scheduled for May to follow up on that. However, I've kind of, I'm holding back on that just yet. And for a couple of reasons, one, budget. And I'm trying to be conservative with the budget in the sense that we had some expenditures that were not covered by the COVID dollars, so I had to absorb some of those expenditures. And I want to maintain or ensure that I am either at or above a budget at the end of the school year. The other part of it is our environment has changed some in the sense that ECMAC, which is a service cooperative up near Brea, Minnesota. I've worked with them over the last several years. And they were developing the similar type of audit that FR Secure has. In fact, FR Secure has trained them on how to conduct the audit. And their cost is about forty percent, thirty to forty percent the cost of what FR Secure would do. And it's basically the same audit. So we're looking at developing a relationship with them and have entered into an agreement with them on a couple of the contracts. MSISAC, which is the multi-state information sharing agency, basically, is coming out with audit procedures. They're calling it hygiene or cyber hygiene. And this is in response to the National Cyber Plan that was recently put out. And I'll cover that a little bit further. And then finally, CIS, which is the Cyber Information Service at the government level, is also coming out with a bunch of services. So we may be able to integrate those services and have the same or better audit controls that we could with FR Secure at a significant reduction. So that's kind of why I'm holding on. The, and of course, we're still doing continued mitigation with all of our audits. And I included a Google audit of our Google domain in there as well that we conducted about a year ago to make sure that we were in compliance, particularly with the new Student Data Privacy Act. I wanted to do that before the act was passed to make sure that we were okay. Currently, as I stand up here today, we are undergoing a firewall and switch review. So I have people swooping around up in our neighborhood up there. And we're reviewing all of our settings, our firmware, our patch management programs and such. And I'll be getting a report on that next week. So, and then next week during spring break, we'll, I'm sure we'll be doing some additional patch benefit on that so that we can maintain our security levels. We did put in a new firewall this year. It's much more robust than our previous one. And we are blocking a lot more types of services than we were before. Cyber insurance renewal is up this week. I'll be working on it tomorrow and a couple of days. You know, last year, we ended up going through like thirteen applications before we are accepted. So this year, I'm hoping that we can do it in much less. And of course, data governance, we've done a lot of data best practices updates and I've written a lot of protocols. And I also was able to establish a peer group with the other technology directors in the state of Minnesota. And there are several of us that started this, I don't want to call it a special group, but we've been sharing our protocols to see that they are kind of in compliance with what other people are doing. And not too long ago, I also participated with just a few, a couple of us in teaching our fellow tech directors and coordinators and stuff in the state up on our best practices and our cyber review. So that was very, it was nice. All right, part of the problem, or part of the issues that I'll be working on upcoming is our phone system is coming up for renewal. Our phone system is in the cloud. We do not post it here, which means we have a contract. And if we don't do something with the contract, we don't have phones. So one of the things I wanted to share with you, just so you could see that we're probably going to see some cost increases and we're probably going to see some changes. And part of that is because of some laws that were recently passed, one of them being Kerry's law. And the first one was a Kerry's law, federal law, said that we have to be able to have a lot of direct access, which we do. So they can now just nine-one-one straight out or dial eight-nine-one-one and get out. But the system must provide onsite notification that the call occurred here and where. That we don't do, we can't do it. Our system only gives the number of, depending on what building they're at, it just gives them that it came from this building. So Ray Baum's Act was passed about the same time. And again, it's kind of the same as Kerry's Act in the sense that anyone who makes a nine-one-one call on our property, it needs to be registered with dispatch or with the public safety answering point. So what that means is that if I made a phone call right here for nine-one-one, when it hits dispatch, they need to know that it came from this room or what classroom or what part of the building. And currently, we don't have the capability to do that. And then finally, I just threw this in because I had the space and it is one of the new laws, is that all public and elementary, secondary schools have to install panic alarms or alternative emergency mechanisms as approved by the Department of Education. And I know that Jim has certainly installed panic buttons and things like that that augment our systems. So that's kind of where it comes from, one of the bases around it. So with the upcoming changes in our phone system, one of the ideas that I'm kicking about is I want to try and stretch our costs as long as I can because for us, our phones, our physical phones would need to be replaced because they're in that window where I can't buy them publicly, I kind of go on eBay and get parts. So, but what, if we can keep it down a little longer, one part that I'm looking at is the idea of geo-fencing. And we would be geo-fencing our property, like the athletic field, elementary, high school. And basically what happens is all of the calls, including our calls here, we map them. Or if somebody makes a call with their personal cell phone, if it's in our geo-fence, it will give the location data to law enforcement as exactly where they're coming from. So we're looking at doing something like that to augment our phone system to get in compliance with these laws. But again, I'll know more in the summer once we actually start getting into it and as we get closer to our phone contracts being done. An update to our fiber, to the athletic complex. I talked with the construction folks today and they're hoping if the snow melts, as we all are, they might be up there as early as the end of April to begin work. If not, we're planning on May because I reiterated to them that our contract, the contracts that I created with the federal government indicate that we should be done with it by June thirtieth. And I really don't want to beg mercy on getting that extended because one, inflation has already added a couple thousand dollars to the cost and I just want to get it done. The additional part that you'll see below is that I've also talked with the vendors and they're willing to do, I don't know what the name of the building is, I call it the snack shack. It's that ticket booth, the building right next to the gate. Currently, we have no plans for that, but I'm going to try and pull fiber from, there's a green utility shed right next to it. Pull the fiber from there into that snack shack so that we can have POS machines, possible phone and cameras for security. And that, so I'm hoping that we'll be doing that at the same time, even though I'm submitting the grant for July. I'm still kind of hoping to get it done in June or by June and just push it in.
Can I just clarify a question? Will that then, concept of the snack shack carry? Yeah, I know, I know. I know the building that you're talking about, but the point of service, like, so that, what you're saying is like a consumer could come in, use their credit card to buy their concessions versus cash?
Yep, point of sale.
Yep, will that carry through like up to the softball diamond or to the baseball? Because there's three distinct areas in the outside that have concessions.
I'm planning on installing fiber to the baseball behind, or softball behind.
Softball's way up in the pinwheel, like way up there.
Yep, and then the athletic, the football field, the press box, and then to that snack shack. Now, the baseball field below, I'll put an up access point on the back of the press box, which should carry down.
To their same, to their little.
Yes, so they will have a direct plug-in, but the wireless should reach.
So like the user, I'm just going on like the user experience, like if somebody was going to a football game or like, that's your vision, right, is that they would be able to do that at all?
Yes, that's my hope.
That's cool. Okay.
The, the other little point is in my backup planning, once I get the fiber up and we can start putting a device up and measuring the actual true signal, I did add the ability to do some point-to-point wireless. And the cost of that, and I got a grant to cover sixty percent of that cost, but I didn't put that in my capital dollars just yet because I'm hoping that the rest is actually okay.
Good.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. So that includes some ruggedized switches because the idea is I want to put some switches at these three locations that will stay in January when it's twenty degrees below zero and still work. So these switches are a little bit more expensive because they have to maintain the temperature in case they do put some security cameras or some kind of controls up there. So those switches generally run about five, six thousand dollars apiece. They're not cheap. And then the wireless network, federal grant, I'm rendering a grant today and tomorrow, finish that up on our wireless network. It's up for renewal. Just to give you an idea, just licensing alone on our wireless network is about thirty-five thousand dollars for that. And I'm hoping to use the grant. No, I'm getting it for about three years. Hope. And then our server room needs a couple of new switches because we've replaced our primary servers this summer fall. And the fiber switches will be a little bit better for data backups. And the fiber switches will be a little bit better for data backups. Just a few instructional projects that I'm working on or we're working on is we're going to be deploying Tableau or improving the deployment of Tableau to the teachers. They're getting some data sets. The counselors will get some other data sets and the principals will get intersection of them or union of them. I'm planning on getting that up by April 1st and then the Office of Teacher and Learning is going to, my understanding is they're going to be training on that this fall so that we can have a better representation of our data out there. Responsive scheduling, I intend to get that done by the first week of April. If you don't know, responsive scheduling is something where we can take like the boost or bucket block or those types of classes and then make it so that we can create an additional course like for a lyceum or an activity where the kids can sign up for it or teachers can put them in it and, and take attendance and have a course. And that allows us to, I don't want to say dual attendance, but put the credit where the credit's due and be able to monitor those kids. I recently merged the middle school. In the past, the middle school was two calendars, two separate schools, five, six, seven, eight. Next year, it's just going to be the one school, one calendar. That will allow them to, that will allow them to do standards and grading and have one school. It was kind of crazy to deal with. So we managed to work out the schedules and do that. And then I'm creating master course catalogs for them because the existing course catalogs are bad data and, you know, it's bad data. So we're cleaning it up. Building summer school over spring break so that Mr. Daniker can get his kids in the right schools. And then we're going to try and finish up the fiscal year twenty-three turnovers with all the other schools and building those schools and adding calendars and kids and all that good stuff. Google pleasures and check, that'll be done in April. Google now has pleasures and checking, so in the past, we're using product alternative and so that will save us some, some dollars. And one-to-one programming, as was alluded to earlier, I'm hoping to get my draft done by the end of April to give it to teaching and learning so that we can collaborate, but it's getting the costs like we talked about. This year, I was okay on Chromebooks because I was able to get that grant last year for two hundred and some thousand dollars to get the Chromebooks and laptops for teachers. Next year, I'm going to be okay by design, but the year after, we're going to have to make some significant decisions. And the draft will be able to lay out the total costs of how much money we truly need each year for the next five years or so. So that'll be coming up hopefully in the next couple of months. District level projects, real quick, VersaTrans. I was told recently that VersaTrans is part of campus now. So what we did is we created a new server in our, in our server environment and I'm going to be starting to get campus into VersaTrans. VersaTrans is the bus company. The idea or the hope is that by fall, again, it's just hoping, hope and wishes, that the bus routes and all that data will be in the parent portals and in the student portals so they can just go out there in the fall and see when the bus routes are coming. And it should also give us better communication efforts. If we have a bus running late, they'd be able to send messages to the parents of the class. Back-end data connections for our school, a layout to EdFi. Part of the EdFi process, if you're unsure, is that we can only really only have one data source up to MDE. And in the past, we had a layout for preschool attendance and we had other sources going up. So what I'm working on is getting these sources into one place, which is Infinity Campus for EdFi. So we're hoping to finish that so that we can get attendance up. And then when roster updates, POS upgrades this summer, we have to do what's called POS two point oh. We are, we're already having problems with POS one point oh, the existing one. We've got some issues with that, but tonight, they're rebooting their servers at campus for us. And then finally, just real quick, EdFi, again, work on that. Chris is still here and she's been doing wonderful. Our air rate from ours and EdFi has gone down considerably. A year and a half ago, we were at ten, fifteen percent air rate plus. In fact, they weren't even accepting our EdFi data. And now it's something percent. So credit, where credit is due. MCCC data, we just, I just received the new manual for that a couple of days ago, so I'm going to change out the codes for Minnesota Common Core Catalog. And that data starts going up this April. Perkins uploaded that last year, basic teams, and the behavioral data improvements. And then next year, the Office of Civil Rights is due, so I'll be working on that next fall. Building security and environmental control systems this week, we're hoping to get it out. What I mean by that is that we're creating a portal, a secure portal for maintenance to be able to go in and look at cameras and the building control systems off campus. Hopefully Wednesday's the day, but if we have some bugs, it might be pushed into spring break. Rec desks so that they can do a better job or cheaper job at their memberships. Currently, they're using another product and this product is, is less and we used it before, but we have to get some credit card PCI compliance with it. Time clock, our current time clock will be going away this summer and going to a new time clock system, so that'll be starting soon, that transition. And then we're also working on staff transition programs, how to get the data when one staff person leaves to the next person. And then data retention will be coming out this summer, how long do we keep data for all the different groups and how to reclassify data. For example, part of our cyber program is, in the last three months, I've deleted like two thousand people out of our systems because past practice was just shut it off. But it increases our risk, so I deleted like two thousand people or more than that. It was kind of drudgery. And data transfer plan and how, again, how do we transfer, how long do we keep data and et cetera. So. And of course, as alluded by Mr. McAlte, we're working closely with them on our budget. And we've also been doing a lot of work with HR, particularly in the last six months or so, in kind of doing some internal audits and some compliance measures. And I think we've done a great job in just getting flow and building processes. All right. Finally, some inter-agency highlights. One thing that we've been doing a lot better on here is again, ECHMEC and security. I visited them recently at a security conference where there was a lot of law enforcement and school officials. And we talked about building security and electronics and door, not door controls, but monitoring people as they come through the building and the 911 stuff and as well as just cyber. Been doing work with cyber hygiene. We signed up for cyber hygiene through CISA. I recently signed up for malicious domain blocking and reporting from CISA. And what that is, is we're hooking our systems, our flow into the federal government's intelligence systems so that if they know that somebody else is getting hit with these malicious attacks, you know, malware, and they know where it's coming from, they're sending it to our systems automatically so that we can block it, so that it doesn't, it can't get in. And last, in the last couple of weeks, we've actually had seven attacks on our firewalls, of people trying to break in and seize our systems that we stopped. And then the federal K-12 cyber report was released in January. That was something that the president had mandated and they actually did it on time. And, and then that basically told the federal government that they needed to do a better job with helping us with our audits and compliance. And then in March, the National Cyber Security Strategy was released and that qualified the cybersecurity report, which then was the cyber hygiene stuff and other stuff, is now part of K-12. And they've determined that we are part of the national strategic infrastructure. So that is giving us some extra options. And then finally, we signed a five-year contract with our internet. It was done. And so we went with MNIT and ECHMEC as a carrier, as an intermediary so that they can help take care of the federal grants and Minnesota telecommunications equity accessing costs. And we were able to do that at a reduced cost. So our internet's actually cheaper starting next summer than we're paying now. And, and then we'll actually get some extra stuff attached on the backside for our protection through the infrastructure app on that since I'm going through MNIT. I think that's it. Any questions?
Yeah.
I have a couple.
That's a lot.
That's a lot. So I gotta think about like a couple of questions that I had. So start with the most recent. So with the new internet contract, does that change any of like speed or any of those sort of things? You hear, you hear things which I don't know are always like accurate, true or whatever, where, you know, the internet will drop or we don't have the bandwidth that we need within our buildings. Does that change anything of those just issues that happen?
No.
Okay.
It should help us for a reason. And, and we're going to, our pipe will be coming through from the cities, it will actually go from the city and then come back down. But the way the infrastructure is built, we will actually have the ability to draw more bandwidth if we need it.
Okay.
Right now, we are capped at gigabit. And if we hit it, it just ultimately drops.
Yeah.
So by doing it collaboratively here with about, gosh, thirty, forty other school districts, we're building a bigger pipe and then we get the pipe to come down until it hits our router. So if we have to surge and get more data for some reason, then we're actually going to get it.
Awesome.
So.
Shouldn't be issues with like MCAs and all of that. Hopefully.
Yeah.
That's, that's not our end, that's the other end.
This, this year with the MCAs, they've decided that they don't necessarily need, we would install intermediary proxy service and we'd download all the test questions and et cetera. And then we would kind of feed the questions locally. But this year, Pearson and MDE thinks that they can do it by themselves. And so we haven't cached our stuff.
They can't.
And I do know that we've had some rumblings from other districts with it. So some of the little things that we're doing is we are doing some system tests like this week. I told you that I've got people in our, in our network looking at stuff, making sure it's current, checking our, my, my ports and my tunneling and et cetera. But the other part is we're looking at, we're going to be putting a password on our public Wi-Fi because then that doesn't allow, because right now Chromebooks can jump or people can jump, so that will not allow the Chromebooks to jump automatically. And then we also put in every computer, every device that we have, like our cell phones for example, has what's called a MAC adder. And that is unique to every device and that's how we track. So we've actually taken the MAC adders from the student devices and we've put them into our system so that they have the priority. So whether or not that helps, we'll see, but we're doing what we can to, to push the data.
That's fine.
So time will tell.
Ask me and the other many fantastic stuff.
My second question is around just like funding sources and, you know, you, so I, what I appreciate about you and your updates is there's always a pepper and you have different grants and other things that you've applied for. So I know that there's a lot of that going on in order to help build our infrastructure and do all of the things. So focusing on cybersecurity and just coming on the heels of the very large data breach that Minneapolis Public Schools is experiencing, clearly this is a issue, clearly. And, you know, gone are the days of student data files that are in a cabinet that's locked in the office and those sort of things. So it is our obligation to protect like private data, right? So with all of that being said, generally speaking, how, how it, how our states and federal funding mechanisms set up in order to, to, to further that, like to, to do that, like, right? Because that is, like cybersecurity seems like it would be a must-have and a must-do.
And, and I'm not going to sugarcoat it.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I wanted to understand. So there's no, it's, it's an unfunded like expectation generally.
The Infrastructure Act that recently came out.
Yeah.
Did, does it make money for each state for cybersecurity for education? However, the states have created a committee or a commission to take that money and MNIT jumped on it so that they can get the control. But what we did manage to get is one person that I know at ECHMEC, Nicole Pruden, we did get her on that commission to act on our behalf so that we at least have a voice in trying to get. But what they're trying to do is they want to try and create, I don't know, a state firewall for lack of a better word, and try and run all this through instead of helping individual school districts meet our best practices. So, but what we've been doing is part of our sub, our subgroup that I'm with at our state tech leaders and my peer group is that we've been working on our best practices and we've been sharing them with the others in the state and, and working that out. So it's a patchwork process with minimal funding, but we'll get there. And then we're also working internally on just our own staff development. And we've got some things in the works to promote our staff and get our staff trained up.
Okay. Super helpful.
Including, including me.
Yeah. And that's just top of mind for, for me and I know we've talked, we've come in on the heels of our budget revision and future budget talks and all of that and just, you know, having a line of sight to the things that we'll need to do, that we won't have direct funding for, things like a lot of the other stuff you've been able to, not a lot, but some different grants and whatnot. So I just look forward to continuing to learn from you, like what our, you know, one-year, three-year, five-year tech needs will be so that we can, you know, think about how we need to consider funding those.
And hopefully though, the next time I address you, we'll have at least a sheet you can look at.
That'd be awesome.
And so that you can see what, what we need to support teaching and learning because, you know, that's the bottom line. That's how we're going to support them and the students in the right way. Anything else?
Anyone else? No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Great, great presentation.
Thank you.
Truly appreciate it. All right. Are we going to let Ryan back in? All right.
You know, waiting till Paige, like.
Yeah, you could have, just kicked him out, right?
Yeah.
There he is, there he is. Excellent. Moving on to 7C Amendment to Service Agreement with ICS.
Got a little, little hair.
Yeah, yeah.
Channel.
I was just waiting to get on.
Great meeting, great meeting. Great going.
Excellent. All right, Mr. Hoffman, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you very much. What is in front of you is an amendment to our master service agreement. So about, almost, it might literally be exactly a year ago. We had the board approve a master service agreement because we kind of understood that there was going to be probably multiple iterations of projects that happened out throughout the next few years, if you will. So that time in March of last year, we, we created a master service agreement, which within that, there's actually two contracts. One, that's kind of a design-related contract that does architectural engineering, and then there's another contract that's construction management, that's oversight of construction. So those two contracts outline all the different responsibilities and requirements and the legal aspect of our, our relationship with the district. And then what happens, and similar to what we did, again, in And then what happens, and similar to what we did again in March of last year for the abatement bond projects, is provide amendments that provide then detail of specific projects and fees associated with those projects as they come about. So we did that with the abatement bond project in conjunction with the master service agreement. And now skipping forward to what's in front of you today is an amendment to do the LTFM and the capital facility bond project that was just approved last month. So there's some, some language in there that, that talks about kind of the project specifics, what we feel the timeline's gonna be to get those implemented, what the budgets are of those projects, and then our fees associated with the, um, call it design and construction then of those particular projects. So that's why it, it might look like, hey, this is, I believe it's only one or two pages. It's, it's pretty simple. Um, it's because you've already approved, you know, the, the thirty-something page contracts times two last year. So that's what it correlates back to. So yeah, there's the safety and security, there's the re-roofing at the elementary school, there's kind of the miscellaneous projects that we've been talking about that are included in that capital facilities bond projects, the RCC floor, the, um, you know, work at the, uh, middle school and, and with relations to gym. You know, so there's, there's a whole lot of different miscellaneous projects included in there that I think we've, we've kind of covered over the last few months in total.
Perfect.
So I will open up if there's any specific questions or discussion.
Any questions for Ryan or Rhonda or, that be it, Ryan or Rhonda or Beth? No? Excellent. All right, very good. So this is an action item in our agenda and I would appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the master service agreement as noted.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ms. Prasko, that was the first, can I have second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hillstone, that's first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. There you go, Ryan, thank you so much.
Have a good night. See you soon. Yep, bye.
All right, so item eight A is just an announcement of our next meetings. Uh, work session, Board of Education, Monday, April third, six-thirty in the district office and regular meeting of Board of Ed, Monday, April seventeenth, six-thirty at the district office. If there are any admin in the room that wish to leave besides Rhonda, please feel free. Next time maybe. Sorry. All right, and now we'll go to board and committee of states. Any volunteers first, I'll ask that.
I'll go first.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
First of all, before I even give my report, as you're filling this out, when you're documenting your superintendent interviews, when you put in for duration, you're gonna put A, B, or C. So I, the Friday is a C because it was over four hours. Monday and Tuesday are Bs because they're under four, but over forty-five minutes. And then Wednesday was a C because it was over four hours. So just to kind of, because this is kind of one of our first, like, really with a lot of stuff on it. Um, like Jamie and I attended the C day at the Capitol. That was also a C because that was over four hours for us. So you would put a C, you'd put three fifteen and then a C. So for my report, um, I attended the continuing ed committee meeting last Friday in the morning. Kevin Neff makes that pretty short and sweet. Um, it was really nice to hear, Mr. Danicker was part of it. Uh, made my heart really happy to hear all the stuff that they have planned for, um, staff development so that our staff, they are getting, they're continuing at hours in the areas that they need, what they're planning. Next year, I think it's cultural competency, which is an eight-hour requirement. And so that's a big one that they're tackling in two, four-hour sessions. For our staff, I think that's huge that we're doing that for our staff because those things can be really hard for them to make sure they have covered. So it was a really good meeting. And Kevin Neff, like I said, he just runs things so incredibly efficient. I think the meeting was like twenty-five minutes long, maybe. It was awesome, super efficient, and it's virtual, which is wonderful. So I attended that. Masico, I was not able to attend because that meeting was on our, uh, second final interview that Tuesday night. So I was not able to attend Masico. Um, but I attended the superintendent interviews, both Friday the twenty-fourth and then the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth and the first of March. Tendency day at Capitol, like I stated, with Jamie, uh, was great. I encourage you to write letters to as many legislators as you can. It is quite scary, um, what they're, the mandates they're putting down on districts. One example is, um, they want to increase minimum pay for our paraprofessionals to twenty-five dollars. And that can be very detrimental to many districts' budgets. Um, they also want districts to be required to pay, um, unemployment to staff that choose a nine-month job. And, uh, we would pay it over, we'd pay the three months that they're not working over the summer. And the last one was health insurance, um, giving a minimum percent coverage that would be required of eighty-four percent for single coverage and seventy-two percent of, uh, family coverage. These items need to be left up to local control and not the state control. And so we need to be talking to our legislators so that they are aware of how detrimental. I was with the superintendent from Cass and Manorville and he had a spreadsheet all figured out and showed that with a five and five increase, they still have to make over two percent cuts because the, those costs increase. And today I just read that they wanna make the unemployment effective this summer and not the following summer, which I just, it's like, how do you even budget? I really, sorry, I'm really struggling with this uh, because I just, I can't understand the rationale behind all of these unfunded mandates and the stress it's gonna cause upon our districts and how it hurts our kids, all these things, how they hurt our kids and take away from our kids in the classroom. So we, we need to, we need to be a voice, we, they need to hear us. If you have time, go down to the Capitol and meet face-to-face with them. That was, um, I was impressed with almost every one of them that we met with and how receptive they were to every one of us in there and genuinely listening to everything they had to say and their feedback to us and how they're like, yeah, these things are wrong, like we should not be doing these things. So, and right now the governor is proposing four and two. So imagine four and two and how little that will cover up those mandates, that we're gonna be upside down. So, um, we, they need to hear us. We need to get our voices heard. So I'm asking all of you, like, please be a voice and advocate for our kids. And anyone listening to this on recording, talk to our legislators, please. Okay, so that was my C day at the Capitol. And then, um, I had a phone call the day after our final interview. Uh, Chair Courtney and I had a phone call with Dr. Riedelhuber, um, for negotiation, uh, contract negotiations. So I will leave. That is it, so.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any questions for her? Very good, anyone else wish to go next?
I can go, mine's pretty short.
Thank you, Ms. Prasko.
Um, the C is actually on Friday, so I'll have more to come. I will definitely deliver the message, I'm sure we'll talk heavily about it, so that, um, and they, the nice thing about being part of C is that they get down there and they advocate for the funding of schools. And it appears what you've said, we'd be going backwards and that's that direction we wanna go. So I will let you know next month what we talked about. And then the superintendent interviews and the whole process, which I really thought went very well this year. And I appreciated doing it in person and the way we had it organized, thank you, Courtney, it went off without a hitch. Even with the jostling around because of the weather, but that's this winter. So we're also used to it, it doesn't even make us mad and I. So, and I'm happy that he signed the contract and we're ready to move forward with that. So that's my very short report.
I can go.
Thank you, Ms. Hillstone.
Um, so all the superintendent meetings, you guys will also add. Um, I did go with Jess to C day at the Capitol. I think she did a great job basically covering what it was, the, the, um, yeah, just the, the superintendent that was there with us that said if we get five and five and all these mandates pass, we're going backwards, which is just, it's, it's crazy.
They're out of control.
Yeah. So, so, um, I did also attend a Northwest Suburban Integration District meeting for Eric who was out of town, so that was fun and interesting. They're looking for a new executive director and having troubles finding one. So, um, I'm assuming you know a little bit more about that. And then I did, I, there was a finance meeting last week. I also attended that, talked about some of the same stuff that we talked about here tonight. Um, and then I've been just jumping into coffee and conversations and legislative Friday chats for MSBA. Had to see Eric there. He asked a question, I was like, oh, I know him. So those have all been, um, good learning opportunities, kind of keeping up to date. The, the legislative Friday ones, they, there was just so much going on all the time that you almost can't keep up. So I can't imagine having to read the bills on top of just kind of knowing what they are, so it's crazy. So, um.
A pleasure joining us, that's great, huh?
So, votes?
Cool. Uh, so just same things, superintendent interviews, all of them. Um, and then Eric and I had a chance to meet with Dr. Riedelhuber on the eighth of March just to go over the, the more of the formal discussion around his contract and present it to him and align on a couple of different things. Yeah, but otherwise it was a great process, I would say, um, for getting the contract to where it was and to be done ratified tonight, pretty awesome. Um, and then just meeting with Rhonda and Eric for board prep on the tenth. And then, um, facilities meeting was actually in-person at the Commons on the fourteenth, where we were able to look at some of the additional use spaces, look at the flooring, look at the different, different things. Again, just to make sure that we're making the right decisions. It's not a short-term but a longer-term solution for the district because no matter how you slice it, it's, it's an investment, even if it's like that, like great, like for like. And so just making sure that we're being thoughtful and planful and, um, like a little bit more forward-thinking in how we're thinking about that space. So, yeah, so that's kind of been the activities of the month.
Excellent, thank you so much. With that, board prep meeting, superintendent interviews, several superintendent contract conversations with people, right? Mike and Chuck as well. And Amy toured me around with her virtually while she was at the facilities committee and I was sitting somewhere else.
That's awesome.
And I went like this, here's my window. The AMSD Board of Directors meeting participated in that, talked about very similar legislative, go talk. The MSBA Board Chair chat took part of that as well. Then the Finance Committee the other day, facilities, I said. Also had been in, in quite a few conversations recently with the HR Director for Elk River Schools about trying to fulfill the executive director position with Northwest Suburban as well as a couple of other people, um, there. That's been pretty much every day for the last week, um, having those discussions. So, um, you're more than welcome to take that spot if you wish, just saying. But no, what we're doing, I, I mean, so as of the meeting, there was one applicant, but the application process didn't close until the nineteenth, which was that Friday, so it had a couple more days. Didn't know, right now, the talk at the board was to suspend or to close it, suspend it, evaluate and possibly repost or bringing that to you all. I have a meeting, is it tomorrow? I think it's tomorrow with, with one of your superintendent people.
Yeah.
To talk through other process. So that's moving forward on that.
Just a struggle.
Well, opportunity. Opportunity to look at structure.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So, which is good.
A little of the Suburban district.
Of the, uh, role that the executive director or the leader of the organization may have. So, there's that. That's it. Any questions? Very good. Ms. Dean?
So, um, since I went over my phone, no. Again, not too involved in the hiring process for the superintendent. I have to thank Courtney. Courtney was all over it. There were days that she was here super early and days that she was here super late, working twelve hours. So thank you, Courtney, you did a great job. And everyone I've talked to has said it was, it was coordinated, the logistics were done just spot on. So thank you for that. But on those three days, I did facilitate a tour. So I spent about an hour, hour and a half with each of the candidates, those three mornings. We toured from like eight to nine-thirty. And, um, it was just nice to really talk to the individuals who could potentially lead this district, um, the next chapter. So, um, I think it was a good choice. And I did get an email or rather a text from McNulty just now. And he said, please let the board know that after the meeting that Jeff got his contract. And he says, thank you. So that has been handled. But yeah. Um, so shortly after that, this is kind of in chronological, chronological order. Shortly after that, um, our first robotics team competed up in Duluth. So I drove up there to check on them for that event. Met with the breakfast, in addition to the, my standing meetings with Northwest Suburban and MASA. So I will reiterate those. Had another meeting with what we're calling the Breakfast Club Group. And that's the individuals who purchased the land directly across from the high school, that corner lot. I guess that would be the southwest corner, um, looking at next steps. There was only a couple of folks at that meeting, uh, the gentleman who purchased the land and two other individuals. It was a big sports night, I can't remember what the evening was, um, but very little turnout. So we didn't really do much at that meeting other than, uh, looking at, um, bringing in a contractor to look at what size building. Um, the Breakfast Club folks really don't know exactly what they wanna do in there yet. The Breakfast Club that they're modeling after in St. Michael, Albertville, what?
It's this, it's, she's getting to it right now.
Oh, okay, got it.
Oh, so I'm sorry, Amy, because I thought I had talked about this one other time.
You did.
So the Breakfast Club is a, is a concept that, that, um, St. Michael, Albertville.
Oh, and house, yeah.
Started a, it's, it's, it's an offshoot off of their FCA group where they took their, their FCA.
It's not district, it'll completely.
No, it's totally separate.
They've taken it off, they've taken what they started out with the FCA group, taken it off-campus. And, um, they have, uh, they built a facility that they call the barn where the kids in the morning go off-campus before school starts and have their, their program, if you will. They serve breakfast. I understand that there's like a two- to three-month waiting period to be a parent volunteer to just serve breakfast. I mean, that's how many kids participate in this event. Um, and I wanted to say that there's this every week. But in any case, there is a Rockford grad who wants to do a similar type of program for Rockford. And so he has taken the initiative to purchase land across the street from the high school and wants to construct, construct a breakfast-type club facility. Couple of things that I know he's looking at doing a little bit different in St. Michael, Albertville. They don't have a commercial kitchen. They would like to do a commercial, a commercial kitchen for Rockford. Uh, but this is totally separate from the district. However, I've been involved in conversations. But this is totally separate from the district. However, I've been involved in conversations because again, it's, it's a growth off of our F C A club. So there's, there's several community members that are involved. Yeah, so we'll see where it goes. But that's the Breakfast Club. And they met, but again, wasn't well attended. Kind of following up on that, had a meeting with the city, with the mayor, continuing to, to maintain those relationships with the city, with the mayor and the, the city attorney.
Is that for Greenfield or Rockford?
For Rockford. Thank you for that. Nope, for Rockford. Attended Massa at the Capitol. There was really two events that were overlapping each other last week. C was at the Capitol and so was the superintendent's organization, M A S A. And I was scheduled there and had to actually present at one, for one congressperson. So we, our paths did not cross. There was another event today sponsored by Masbo, and I did not go. There was just too much to do to get ready for the, for the board meeting. And just, it was just, it's just too much. So it was three days. Attended a finance committee meeting. Really appreciate Mike McNulty. Feel like he's really getting his legs under him as it relates to finance. And we had our first finance committee meeting, which I think is gonna serve the district well going forward, just knowing some of the financial decisions that we have to make with, with COVID and, and the operating levy expiring and what's next steps. So really glad that that is taking on some legs. And then the last thing is if you missed the dance recital last Friday, you missed a real treat. Oh, no. But it was super fun to see the kids, the young ladies in their little sparkly outfits and then see the adult group dance. It was just, it was, it was a fun event. And it was packed. It was super fun. So that's my board report.
Thank you very much.
Can I just?
Oh, additions?
I just wanted to mention that maybe for our work session in April, a section of it, we as a board need to discuss our board committees and what's in policy regarding our board committees because there are roles that need to be established, minutes that need to be submitted regarding those committees.
The three?
Yeah. Four, the four, the top ones. The top four. So I just wanted to say, like, I feel like, we had talked about maybe doing it in February and I think everything's just been coming at us so fast that if we, I can say it here with everybody.
I just saw it written down.
If we could put a section in there, that would be great. I will look through the policy and put together something to keep us on track.
A template would be really great too, like a template. So like when we.
Right, right. And I'll see if I can find even templates that people use. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Maybe put a meeting minute template in the board folder is what we could do.
Anything else for the group? Last item nine, adjournment. Anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Very good, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else want to make a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott.
Discussion?
No? All right, in favor to adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourn at nine oh three.
That was weird. You weren't, you guys were like looking at me. I'm like, okay, I do have to make that.
Rhonda, what was your time?
She do have such enthusiasm. Eight fifty. Oh my God, so close though. We couldn't.